Order. First thing I have to report is what we did this afternoon. We had a workshop on future staffing considerations. Then we had a session, in closed session, on matters pertaining to pupils. And conference with our labor negotiator, which was Dr. Croft, about unrepresented employees. And no action was taken. So now we're into open session. And we would like first to have the pledge of allegiance. And, let's see. Dr. Brighamine, would you like to read us something?
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That would be better when kids are saying it. Now, I understand that the Weaver Choir has a little song for us.
And some can step up above if you need to.
Yeah, they can go off a step.
And would everyone please stand for the National Anthem?
Okay. My next item was supposed to introduce any special guests. And of course, you're all special, so welcome to our board meeting. Our next item on the agenda is our student board member report. Megan Wyman.
Thank you and good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Croft, cabinet members, friends, family, and community. I'm Megan Wyman, and I will be presenting tonight's student board report. So, this report, I wanted to highlight our district-wide Peace Week. Although this year not every school did it in the same week, I thought it would be a great time to recognize it because Low Sal High School just finished ours up last Friday. So, speaking of the high school, throughout the week, every day, we had spirit days. Students were able to dress up in various attires throughout the whole day to spread peace throughout our school and to make sure that we were keeping up the spirit of Peace Week. So, on Wednesday, we had an awesome lunchtime activity. We handed out shirts and students were able to bring their own shirts and tie dye them. So, we had buckets of tie dye right behind the PAC. And we had rubber bands for them to make their own cool designs. They could twist it up and make a spiral or anything they'd like. Mix the colors to make awesome shirts like you see these girls wearing in the picture. Those shirts were, the shirts that they made on Wednesday, they were able to wear on our dress-out day Friday, which was where tie dye or hippie gear. On Friday, we also had our first annual Peace Week picnic. You can see in this picture, we, ASB provided blankets and an easy up that's not set up yet in this picture. An easy up and lawn chairs. And we celebrated the end of Peace Week at lunch together with everyone behind the PAC. So, moving on to our middle schools. Old Middle School actually started off their year with Peace Week. And I thought it was really cool because they wanted to promote kindness and positivity at, right at the beginning of the school, just a great way to start off the school year. They had awesome whole-school participation. As you can see in this picture right here, the whole math department dressed up for one of the spirit days. I think that's totally awesome because when the teachers dress up for the spirit days, it just makes the kids want to dress up even more. Did awesome lunchtime activities as well. So, it's great to see it throughout the whole district, especially in the middle school, gearing them up for the high school spirit weeks. Our other middle school, McCollum, had a really awesome activity as well throughout the whole week. They had poster boards throughout campus and little sticky notes. And on these sticky notes, students or faculty members could write down random acts of kindness, whether it was something that they had done or something that had been done to them or they had just seen. They were able to put them on the sticky notes and post them up on these boards. So, as you can see, this one is filled all the way around. And these were all around campus. So, throughout the week, they were just filled more and more with random acts of kindness, which is awesome. And then on Friday, they ended off the week with a flash mob from their choir. So, at lunchtime, so that was awesome, too. So, moving on to our elementary schools. I was lucky enough to go to McGaw Elementary School. And at McGaw, I was able to participate in Come Walk in My Shoes. If you don't know what that is, it's a activity where students do various activities that mimic the disabilities of some children. I remember in elementary school having a blindfold and trying to like read Braille or something really difficult or writing with my left hand. And then realizing that these students who were in my first and second grade class were dealing with those things every day. And I think even at a young age, I was able to realize that the people right next to me were struggling with things a lot different than I was. And I was able to appreciate them a lot more and respect them a lot more. So, it was really awesome to see that this spread to Rossmore Elementary School. So, this year at Rossmore, it's the second time that they had it. And students, like I said, were able to do various activities, whether it was putting gloves on their hands and seeing how difficult it could be to grasp certain things. They were able to see how other people have to live throughout the day. So, that's a great thing to incorporate in their Peace Week. And I hope it spreads not only to Rossmore and other elementary schools, but maybe even middle schools and high schools because it's a really great program. So, that was all I have for Peace Week. But looking ahead, this week is homecoming week here at Low Sal. One of the busiest weeks of the year, but by far my favorite week of the year. Friday is our homecoming football game. So, we want, at the high school, we want to invite everyone in the community to come out at 7:00 at Vet Stadium to help support our boys. We're going to be wearing white, so make sure you come out. And there's going to be an amazing halftime show. Everyone is in this halftime show from choir, song, cheer, dance. Even ASB has a little dancing part in it that we're trying really hard to perfect. So, it's an amazing show that just kind of caps off the whole week. And we'll also be presenting our homecoming king and queen winners. So, that's pretty awesome. And also on Saturday, for all the adults out there, Taste of Low Sal is this Saturday from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. It's in the parking lot at the shops at Rossmore. This event is an amazing event for our community, but also our school. So many things are donated to our school. And every sport and activity is involved in this. So, it's a great way for our parents to have a really fun time together, but also having a fun time helping our district. So, that's all I have for today, but thank you.
Next is my, the president's board report. I had the opportunity to observe an activity at the high school, which we're going to highlight in the agenda coming up, about our, the three individuals who have been chosen for our, the All-America Band. This is the second year in a row that we have had individuals chosen for this All-America Band. And it's really quite an honor. And I see the three gentlemen that have been chosen standing in the back. I recognize you from the, would you just raise your hand back there in the door? Yeah. Preston Crandall, Eric Perez, and Kevin Tomashiro. And Preston does the marimba, right? And Eric is the tenor drums and Kevin is the trumpet. And as I said, it's really interesting. This year, it's three boys and last year it was three girls. So, now we're even. This is, they're going to be all honored at the All-America Band in Arlington? No, it's, not Arlington. Yeah, okay, thank you. And so, they get to go and be in the band. And when they had the ceremony, they gave them their jackets and everything that's going to wear. So, I'm not going to say anymore because they're going to be coming and being recognized. So, I'll go to Dr. Croft's report.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, and all of our guests tonight. So, in honor of homecoming, I do want to honor our football program. But really, more importantly, is that just the culture of Low Sal, which really gets started in our elementary school. And some people in the audience may not know. So, Megan, every week, highlights a little bit about the high school and then selects, on a rotation basis, some of the other schools. So, every school, they get equally highlighted a few each time. And so, we have an amazing district that really builds a level of support all the way through. And this year at the high school, we have a new video teacher. And a student at the high school named Emma Cotter put together this video that I'm going to show. And she's part of that video program. And it happens to also be of our football coach. And this week is our homecoming game.
To me, football is about life. It's just condensed to four 12-minute quarters. And whether you're facing adversity or the great things that come with our sport or the hard work and the work ethic or the mental mistakes and physical mistakes that you make, that's life. And if you can learn to overcome those within a game or in a 12-minute segment, then maybe you have something to draw back on when that happens in your real life. One of the main books that we read in our football program is called The Winner's Manual for the Game of Life. This book right here is about football. And it's taught through football and the experiences of football. But it's more about life. And it's more about being a good person. It's more about seeing a bigger picture than just myself. It's about maybe seeing the kid at lunchtime who's eating lunch by himself. And you say, wow, I'm going to go over and have lunch with that person today. It's about making a difference in somebody else's life. And if you can make a difference in somebody else's life, then maybe they make a difference in somebody else's life. And that kind of has transcending effect among the people in our community and certainly here on campus. The kids are really, really amazing. They are sincerely nice. They're good people. I can sit down and have an adult conversation with any kid on this campus and really feel like they're genuinely engaged. It's a much more mature campus than I've ever had the pleasure to work for. And it's really is, it's re-motivated me. I'm having an awful lot of fun here, the times that I've been here. But it makes me want to work even harder because I got kids like you, who are just genuinely good kids. And that makes me want to get up in the morning and work even a little bit harder than I was working before. This is the fifth school that I've had the opportunity to coach football. And if I take all of the good in the previous four schools and lump them together, it's still not Low Sal. This is an amazing place.
So, thank you, Emma Cotter. I think she did a great job. And since there's so many younger families in our audience, and this is Weaver's night, a big thank you because when the kids come, wasn't that awesome? And so, thank you for all the support we get from our families. You are really raising amazing young men and women.
Okay. Now, our next item is the recognition of our awardees for the All-America Band. So, if you would join us down here at the podium, we'd like to recognize you.
So, before our esteemed president gives the recognition, Tom, come on up. So, Mr. Plunkett is our band director. And I remember being hired initially part-time. You have really grown a tremendous program with great students and just tremendous support from our families. And so, they have so many accolades and awards. But just this year, as Mrs. Russell did say, two, three students were chosen for the U.S. Army All-American Band. But also, they were invited to the London's New Year's Day Parade for 2018. They've won numerous local and state awards. And so, the program that you've taken and built is extraordinary. And you are outstanding. And I love listening to them. And Mr. Plunkett's also the guy you can call and say, hey, can we get a band to play here? Can we get the drum line to come here and there? And so, we really appreciate your community involvement. And in Low Sal, we like to say, all in, all the time. And you, sir, are all in, all the time. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And she's taller than I am. We have for Mr. Plunkett and for the band, a certificate of appreciation that says, "The Low Sal Alameda's Unified School District, Board of Education and Administration, commend Low Sal Alameda's High School Band and Band Director, Tom Plunkett, signed by all the board members on a very fancy paper." So, congratulations for everything that you have done. And especially to these three young gentlemen, who are just stellar examples of our school district and will represent us in San Antonio, if I only get that right. And we are just so very proud of you. And again, congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President. What I'd like to share is just how phenomenal this achievement is. So, the U.S. Army started this program in 2007. And last year, there were 2,000 students who auditioned for 125 spots, of which Low Sal had three, and they were all girls. But if you think about the number of high schools in the United States and the number of marching bands, there are thousands and thousands of kids who have the potential. So, if you're a school, maybe once in a decade, if you get one student onboard, that's fantastic. But to have six kids in two years is a testament to the work that they put into it, but also into the leadership of Mr. Plunkett. So, I'd like to give it up for him and our students again. Just as last year's trio was a unique and joyful group, this trio is also pretty remarkable. And they're very distinct. So, if you think of a Preston Crandall, I always strive to get him to smile because he's very serious and focused. And he might be smiling right now. But if you see pictures of him in the band, he is so focused. He plays the marimba. If you know what the marimba is, it's a cousin of the xylophone. It's a very demanding instrument that is percussive and requires lots of coordination. But I often see him as the guy that's the one to push any equipment around and help his fellow bandmates. And if you look at Eric Perez, he's always smiling. And so, he's playing the tenor drums, which again, takes lots of coordination where he and several other students are playing instruments in a syncopated way. And there's a lot of dedication to that. And then Kevin Tomashiro, who ironically has a twin. And last year, we had twins that make it. So, we almost had back-to-back twins. But as a father of a trumpet player, I totally get where he is now. And if you think about the starting point of playing the trumpet to where you end up, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of breath control and a lot of dedication. So, I just think these are three fantastic Griffins. And again, we want to give it up to them and wish them the best as they represent Low Sal. The last thing I wanted to share with is just the achievement of our band being invited to the London's New Year's Day Parade. So, I think we have all heard of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. And we've heard of the Rose Parade in Pasadena, which are pretty phenomenal national events. But the London Parade is an international event with over 21 countries represented, broadcast to millions and millions worldwide. They have 8,000 participants compared to 4,000 of the Macy's. And then in terms of the patrons that come, it's over a million people that come and line the streets. And so, I think to get picked for that, again, just shows how phenomenal that our band is. And this is my personal bias, but I think of any group at Low Sal, band is probably the only one that truly exemplifies the four A's. Every student has to meet an academic minimum to stay in band. And most of our kids go right into a four-year college out of high school. If you've never marched before or played an instrument at the same time, then you don't know the athletic component. But trust me, there's very much an athletic demand. These kids hang out together at lunch. They do things together. They are very much their own club in terms of activities. And music itself is probably one of the most creative arts out there. So, kudos to Tom and the kids for representing the four A's. And thank you very much.
Mr. Plunkett, would you like to say a few words?
So, just on behalf of the band, thanks a lot for the recognition. It's really nice for these guys to get to come. And I would say, dress up, but you know, they did that. We just, we rehearsed until 6:00. So, we got over here pretty quickly. So, but it's really nice for these guys to have a little bit of spotlight. It really is an amazing feat if you think about the number of kids who audition each year. And then, just the work it takes. These guys have sought out private lessons. They've worked extra beyond what the band does. Their parents for making sure that they have the best equipment. And they're at their lessons and they're still able to keep up with their studies. It takes a lot of work to get these kids where they are. And then as far as London, I really think it's a testament to our family and especially our boosters, that we're a program that the parade has acknowledged and knows that we can travel and that knows that we'll represent well. And we're just really proud of all of that. So, thank you very much for this. And especially thanks for these guys for having them. Appreciate it.
Next, we have our report from one of our fabulous schools in the district, Weaver. And Dr. Brighamine, you're on.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Croft, members of the cabinet, and members of our community. I want to thank you this evening for coming for this board presentation. And before I start, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity and privilege of working with this incredible community every day. It's just a blessing to be able to come and work in a place where there is so much joy and you're doing so much for children. And I'm really appreciative and humbled. And I appreciate the honor of doing that. So, I'm going to start with a little bit of data right here and go through our SBACK results for last year. So, what you're looking at is a screenshot of grade-level performance for our third-grade ELA, which is in our illuminate software system. And so, what you can see here is the percentage of students who met or exceed standards followed by how they, their claim performance scores were. So, in third-grade ELA, you can see that 96% of our students met or exceeded standards. And then they were also very proficient in the claim scores as well. The claim score for reading measures demonstrating understanding of literary and nonfiction texts. Writing measures producing clear and purposeful writing. Listening is demonstrating effective communication skills and the ability to interpret and use information delivered orally. And then, and then research and inquiry are based on investigating, analyzing, and presenting information. So, then all four of those categories are based on a rubric, based on their computer adaptive performance and their performance task test. And they get a score in those areas. And so, our ELA was, again, 96% meeting or exceeding standards. And you can see that most of those students are exceeding standards. In the area of third-grade math, we had 99% of our students meeting or exceeding standards. And the claims, that's pretty awesome. Thank you. We're pretty proud of that. And the claims in this area are concepts and procedures, which measures applying mathematical concepts and procedures. Problem-solving, modeling, and data analysis using appropriate tools and strategies to solve real-world and mathematical problems. And then communicating reasoning, which is students demonstrating their ability to support mathematical conclusions. And again, these scores are added based on a rubric that is combining their computer adaptive and performance tasks. In fourth-grade ELA, we had 95% of our students who met or exceeded standards.
I think that's still a clap.
Yeah.
We'll take all the claps. We are happy about that.
We only clap for 99. I mean, that's bad. Yeah.
In fourth-grade math, 93% of our students were proficient. And again, performed very well in the claim performance areas. Clap? And in fifth-grade ELA, 92% of our students were proficient or advanced. And again, as you look across these data pages, a large majority of the students who are meeting or exceeding in standards are actually exceeding in standards. So, we're really happy about that. In fifth-grade math, 80, whoops. 89% of our students were proficient or advanced in math. And then if you take a look at the comparative data from last year, you can see our growth. So, in grade three, we went from 92 to 96 in ELA. In grade four, 85 to 95 in ELA. Grade five, 87 to 92. Grade three, 94 to 99. Grade four math, 86 to 93. And grade five, 91. And we dropped two points to 89. But if you look at the same groups that are traveling across grade levels, I'm going to try to use this red pointy thing. Or maybe I won't. If you look at grade-three ELA, we were 92% proficient or advanced. And then that group that moved into fourth grade went to 95. Grade four went from 85 to 92% in grade five in ELA. Grade three went from 94 to 93. And then grade four went from 86 to 89. So, there was growth across the same groupings as well. So, we are pretty pleased with our data. So, in terms of our board priorities, this evening, I want to talk just for a few minutes on how we are focusing to meet each of the board's priorities. And in the first priority, increasing academic achievement for all students. We are really focused, as always, on providing the best first instruction in our district's signature instructional practices. And this afternoon, we met as a school team and decided which area we wanted to really focus on this year. And because when we analyze our data, reading comprehension seems to come up as an area that we want to grow in, that's the area that we decided K-5 that we would work on in terms of working with our students this year. So, providing a lot of reading comprehension strategies, shared inquiry, and those strategies that lead to deeper understanding of text. So, we've worked a lot on that this year. A second way we are addressing goal one is by powerful interventions and differentiation of instruction. We always want to look at and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. And so, in grades one through three, we continue with our intensive reading lab. This year, in grades four through five, our classroom teachers are actually providing that intervention as we have intervention teachers come into the classroom. And then, we added our math RTI program from third and fourth into fifth this year. And that's where we take a group of students and break them down based on a particular area of need. So, at the beginning of a unit, our students all pre-test. Then we take a look at their results and form groups based on need. If we see a group of students, for example, who are struggling with word problems, maybe, we put them in a group. Then... we put them in a group, then those students have the same post-test and then we form groupings that way. And that was the third and fourth grade practice and we've pushed it up into fifth grade this year. And then as you see, we have lots of kids on the cusp from meeting to exceeding standards and we really want to address that area as well. I'm always interested in making sure that we're pushing those kids in the middle as well to make sure that they're advancing as well. So enriching curriculum with things like junior grade books, Fosno math units, challenge math, strategic questioning and inquiry-based learning is what we're working on. Another area that we look at in terms of, am I behind? Sorry. In terms of making sure that we're increasing achievement for all students is making sure that we're getting our students' college and career ready. And so to support in our goal of unlimited opportunities upon graduation, our goal at Weaver is to keep our students connected to school, provide college prep education at flag ceremonies on college days, educate school community on A through G requirements, focus on readiness for Algebra eighth, Algebra I rather, in eighth grade by ensuring that all of our fifth graders move into 6A so that they're on that track, making sure that all students are reading at grade level by grade three, participating in LAUSD College Spirit and Education Days and also pushing for 100% proficiency on our exams. And finally, in terms of increasing academic achievement for all students, we want to make sure that students are connected because we know that students who are connected at school do really well. We have a couple of highlights this year that I am going to let our student presenters talk about in just a few minutes. Another priority for the board is to ensure a safe, healthy and drug-free environment. And so our goal at Weaver is to be proactive versus reactive, to make sure that our students have the appropriate education and using Peace Week, Red Ribbon Week and Kindness Week. Also educating our parents and community and then lots of practice with monthly safety drills and then prevention. And we are really pushing this year, making sure that our gates are locked and our classroom doors are locked during instructional time. I know that's a big priority. In priority three, enhancing communication processes to engage, inform and educate all stakeholders, we continue to work in that area. We are doing some really fun things with Twitter and Instagram that I think our parents really love because it brings the classroom to life and helps our parents be able to see what goes on in the day-to-day operations of our school. In the area of effectively maximizing resources, at Weaver, we actively maximize resources by being on top of attendance and supporting families with attendance issues. We are really pushing this year for 98% attendance. We've been on the 97% and slowly growing for the last few years. So I've really pushed to make sure that we go over that 98% attendance rate this year and working with those families that have attendance issues and struggle with attendance because of needs and finding ways to work with those needs to make sure we get students in class on time. The other thing that we do is maximize the money to benefit the most needy students through our LCFF and School Site Council. And then also I have to thank our PTA and our friends of Weaver for all of the things that they do to enhance our resources at our school site. So let's give them a big round of applause. And our last board priority is to maintain modern facilities and we have gone through modernization at Weaver and we are working this year on adding some enhancements such as benches on campus, murals, did I need to flip? There we go, sorry. And putting signage around campus. We're going to put some signs on all four corners of the school since we don't have a marquee that will clearly identify us as the Weaver male, Weaver whales. And then also here, you can see we have some technology goals too that we're working on, a new computer lab in our media center. We pooled all of our Dell cards to grade five so that they all have one-to-one devices, bringing Chromebooks into third and fourth grade. And then we did provide our teachers with new iPads this year. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity and coming to present to you this evening and I would like to ask if you have any questions at this time.
Anybody? Doesn't look like it.
All right.
Have your student board members, no?
At this time then, I will move right on to our student board members who are going to come up and speak. And the first young lady I would like to introduce is Ms. Tuesday Delmonico and she is going to come up and speak to you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Croft, cabinet and guests. My name is Tuesday and I'm a fifth grader at Weaver. I joined the ambassador program to stand up to bullying, become a leader and to improve my public speaking. Community service is part of our Weaver culture because it teaches kids to help others before themselves and to give back to the community. Even though I just started ambassadors, I've learned so much about leadership already. I'm serving on the Peace Week Committee. Peace Week is a week when a group of ambassadors...